Ladies and gentlemen, six o'clock, I call this meeting to order. If we could get a roll call to determine a quorum, please.
Larry Chesney.
President.
Sarah Savilecik.
Here.
Francine Doncic.
Here.
Michael Flick. Currently absent. Kate Nelson.
Here.
Larry Payton did indicate that he would be absent from tonight's meeting. Pat Phillips, here. We have a quorum.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Mr. Payton, if you could lead the Pledge of Allegion, please.
Pledge of Allegion.
I'm at Kate.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
We have one thing we're missing, Roger. Is Roger online or is he going to be present?
He should be here.
He was upstairs, so I hope he will be joining us shortly. But we do have the appeal procedure. I don't know if I can read it or if Jen would like to read it.
Well, or if we can get the ethics law first, please.
Okay.
Jen, if you, ethics. Yes, please.
Commissioners, I'm reminded that with respect to any matter or any person coming before the Commission today, number one, you have received.
A gift or loan. Number two, you have a pecuniary interest. Number three, you have a commitment in a private capacity such as a family, employment, business, or similar relationship. Or number four, you provided representation or counseling before an agency to a person or entity for compensation within the last year on a matter being considered today. Please disclose that gift, loan, interest, commitment, or prior representation at the time the matter is being considered. And furthermore, please abstain from deliberation or voting on the matter if it's clear that the gift, loan, interest, commitment, or prior representation would materially affect the independence of judgment of a reasonable person. Commissioners are also reminded that under the Planning Commission rules, if you've had any contact outside this meeting with any persons interested in a matter coming before the Commission today, please disclose the nature of that contact at this meeting. Thank you.
Commissioner Chesney, if you could read the appeal procedure, please.
Most decisions rendered by the Planning Commission are appealable to the Board of County Commissioners. If you disagree with the decision of the Planning Commission and you want to appeal its action, you may do so in writing within 10 calendar days from the date that the decision being appealed is signed by the Planning Commission Chair and/or the Secretary of the Planning Commission, filed with the Secretary of Planning Commission, and mailed to the original applicant in the proceeding being appealed in accordance with Washoe County Code. Please call the planning staff immediately at 328-6100 for information on the appeal procedure and application fee.
Thank you, Commissioner Chesney. Ladies, is there any public comment at this time?
I have no public comment in chambers.
And I have no hands raised via Zoom.
All right, thank you. Then we'll move along. Next item on the agenda is approval of the October 5, 2021 agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Commissioner Chesney, move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Pat Phillips, second.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, ladies and gentlemen, is the approval of the September 7, 2021 draft minutes.
Commissioner Chesney, move to approve the draft minutes.
There were second.
Commissioner Nelson, I'll second.
Is there any discussion or changes? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Thank you much. Next, ladies and gentlemen, we're moving on to item eight, consent items. The first one on the agenda is a tentative map case number WTM5-2-92. I guess I will read it since Roger is not present. For possible action for hearing, discussion, and possible action to approve an extension of time for expiration of the approval of the subdivision for two years from October 16, 2021 until October 16, 2023. The subdivision was originally approved by the Planning Commission on August 18, 1992 for 530 single-family lots. The Planning Commission may grant an extension of not more than two years for the presentation of any final map after the two-year period presenting a successful final map has expired in accordance with NRS 278-360. And before we get started, I want to ask if there are any ethics or ex parte communications from the board?
No.
No. I need to just make note that I am, know the applicant owner Fred Widside through the Reno Rodeo, but I think I saw him, the last time I saw him was a couple of months ago. We talked rodeo prior to that. He hasn't really been living in the state. Thank you.
Chair Doncic.
Yes.
I do have a point of clarification. This is a consent item, so.
Yeah, so for the board's, if it's a consent item means that you don't have to have discussion on the item. If you do not wish, you of course are always welcome to say, you know what, we're going to take this item off consent and discuss it and hear a presentation and whatever the board would like to hear about this item. Or you can simply vote on the item after requesting public comment.
Chair Doncic, I would like to remove this item from consent agenda.
Do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So then do we just?
Don't we have to do public?
Vote on it or? We're not?
No, no, if it's, if I'm, because I've requested to remove it from consent. So now it can come into, you know, more deliberation, more conversation. Consent is up or down?
Okay, thank you.
And I will note that I know Mr. Pelham is not present right now, and I did see Julie. I was going to, okay, I was going to say we could move on to her item if the board wanted.
But she's not here either.
She's not here either.
On me as well, so, yeah.
Here he is. Thank you, Julie.
My apologies. I honestly feel that I can switch to six from six thirty.
Oh.
So Roger, we have moved right along. We are actually ready for your discussion or presentation on item 8A, St. James.
Yeah, they decided to pull it off their consent agenda, so they'd like a presentation for St. James.
Shall I go to the podium?
Yes, please.
Then take a moment to gather your thoughts.
Good evening. For the record, Roger Pelham with Washoe County Planning. I don't have a slideshow prepared for this item. This was, of course, intended to be on the consent agenda. Continuation or extension of a tentative map is allowable by the Planning Commission under certain circumstances. In this case, it's simply request by the applicant. They have maintained the legitimacy of the tentative map by a series of events, including recording previous final maps and requesting previous extensions. There was also a development agreement, I believe, at one point during the rather long history of the St. James Village tentative subdivision map. With that, essentially, they're simply bringing that request forward to you at this time. These used to be relatively, relatively common. We haven't had them too many times in the last few years, but I'm available for any specific questions you may have.
Roger, this is, they're asking for an extension on the final phase of this project, aren't they? Do you understand that correctly?
No, this is, I don't have the numbers right off the top of my head, but this is maybe halfway through. There are still a couple of hundred, I believe, potential lots that could be recorded in this project.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, any further questions?
Chair Doncic.
Yes.
So the reason, I'm the one that requested that this come off the consent agenda so we had more opportunity to have conversations. This project has been on record for, for quite some time and, okay, go ahead.
It has been. I want to say the original, actually, you're looking at the staff report, I'm not. I want to say that original.
1992.
Was, yeah, 92 or 93. So we're looking at, what is that, something like 28 years?
19 years.
19 years, yeah.
And so.
2002, 12, yeah.
And this is, you know.
Something like 28.
A long time.
Oh, I thought you said 2002.
1992. So, and this is not meant to be derogatory, but this could be, fall into those examples of zombie projects that are just languishing. This one has some building going on, but we continue to, we continue to continue. And so what is, what is the parameters of why we would continue to offer these continuations? That's so redundant. Since 1992.
Generally speaking, I would say if the applicant complies with code to maintain the validity of the final map, I have not heard of one of these not being approved going forward. And in this case, this is the appropriate process. Now, they do not have the opportunity to come back in another two years and ask for an additional two-year extension. It's one time, so final map, one extension, and then they would be required to record another final map here in a couple of years.
Okay, so I can get a better handling on this, is that, so this was initially approved in 92? And then, so extensions were, were granted based on each section of mapping, not necessarily a final map?
Yes, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yes, there were final maps recorded in between each one of those.
Okay.
So they have recorded, I want to say, a couple of hundred or so lots, and there are a couple of hundred remaining.
Thank you.
Chair Doncic, I have questions. So it looks like they're having issues with a water project, is that they don't have the water rights to serve their project. They're working with Tamwa to redevelop the water in the area. I mean, they just say that they're, they've entered into an agreement with Loomis as of April 2021 to resolve this water issue. But they don't say it's because they don't have the water to develop or?
The applicant is required to provide water rights at the time of the final map. If additional physical facilities are required, then again, that has to be established, constructed or bonded for at the time of the final map. We would never allow a final map to be recorded when appropriate facilities are not in place. Now, in this particular case, there's actually one additional level of complexity, and that is, at a certain point, I don't remember the exact number, about 250 or so, when that many lots have been recorded or constructed, the applicant will be required to hook up to community sewer. And I can tell you that at this time, the reach from essentially Mount Rose Highway up to the facility has not yet been constructed. But again, they are required to do that prior to recordation of final map or construction of a certain number of dwellings.
I guess my main heartburn is, is they, they knew that this deadline was coming, and they just entered into an agreement to resolve the water issue in April.
I believe, and I'm going to look over at our recording secretary, is that the applicant's representative, Ken Crater, will be logged on, on Zoom this evening. And so any specific questions for the applicant or their representative can be addressed to him.
Yes, I can confirm that. I will go ahead and allow Ken to speak. And Ken, if you could please.
Thank you very much. And again, I apologize for my tardiness.
This is Ken Crater. Can you hear me?
Yes, Ken, we can, thank you.
Can I answer your questions really quick, then?
Please.
If you would, please.
Sure. So for the record, my name is Ken Crater, representing the applicant. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. And we have recorded numerous final maps through the years to keep this map alive. And in fact, with the Great Recession, we had three final maps recorded that we had to revert back to acreage because there was no lot sales going on at that time. But the project is very active now. There's a lot of lot sales going on, and we have been working much longer than from April of this year to resolve some of these water issues with the Truckee Meadows Water Authority. And we have been working very closely with the Truckee Meadows Water Authority for the last couple of years. And basically, what is at issue is we designed the water system for the entire project when we initially got it approved under the Washoe County Water Resources. When Washoe County Water Resources merged with Truckee Meadows Water Authority, we now fall under a much different set of regulations with Tamwa. And so we've been trying to resolve those issues, and we had a discovery done by Tamwa, and it didn't make any sense to us. And so we finally engaged Loomis and Associates. They originally told us they would be done in July, but frankly, every consultant in town is so busy that they still haven't completed the final report. It's supposed to be done next week. But what we have found through that study is that the Truckee Meadows Water Authority was actually using water from our water system for homes outside the St. James Village area. In fact, they were using as much water as our entire development, and so it was creating pumping issues with the wells. But now that we've got this information, we can go back with Tamwa, get a new discovery done, and be able to finalize the water plans for the project, to move this project forward. Again, as I said, lot sales are very strong. So we did file the request as required by the county to extend this map one time, but we're very confident moving forward, we'll have the issues resolved with Tamwa, and be able to move forward and build out the remaining portion of the project. Obviously, it's a great market right now. We have a lot of action, but it's just been a very difficult process with Tamwa and the new regulations that they have as compared to Washoe County Water Resources. So that's what's necessitated this, this extension. But we're fully committed to building out this project. We're getting great feedback from buyers, and we're very excited about being able to move this project forward. We actually have a final map into the county right now. So as soon as we resolve this water issue, we'll be able to record that final map very quickly, and we're ready to file a new final map literally in the next couple of months. So I know it seems like not much has happened in the last few years, but there's a ton of excitement and activity, and within the next 12 months, we'll have another 22 lots recorded and be moving this project forward. And happy to answer any other questions that you may have. Thank you.
Commissioner Chesney?
Ken, how many lots total are left to be developed in the entire subdivision?
Roger was correct. There's about 200 lots remaining to develop. We've recorded about 220 lots to date.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, any further questions?
Just one more question, one more follow-up. So the water study that Loomis is doing, that I'm assuming is showing that the wells, the existing domestic wells that are like at the end of Callahan Ranch Road, won't be impacted by additional pumping from your project?
Yes, that is correct. In fact, in addition to the Loomis study, we had a hydrogeologist do a very detailed study on our wells, and we found, and Tamwa's hydrogeologist agreed, that the two wells on the St. James Village property are separated from the other wells in the Callahan Ranch Road area by faults. And there is absolutely no impact whatsoever between the St. James Wells and those other wells. And we have enough water rights to build out the entire project, so water rights is not an issue.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioners, any further questions? Yes, Commissioner Doncic.
Chair Doncic, thank you. So earlier, Ken, you said that, and I would be paraphrasing, but Tamwa was drawing from your wells, which was causing an overdrawing. So how quickly is this going to be resolved?
It's being resolved very quickly now. Tamwa's been extremely cooperative. They've supplied all the data that we needed to do this study, and frankly, they did not even realize that they had a check valve open that was allowing water to flow into other areas along Joy Lake Road. So it's been a learning process for all of us, and I think part of the reason is, you know, Tamwa staff doesn't have the history that Washoe County Water Resources have. But I guess there was some issues with some other storage tanks along Joy Lake Road. So since it's part of the Tamwa system, they were able to use water from the St. James Wells to provide water to those other areas while they did the maintenance and repairs to those other tanks.
Thank you. I sincerely hope that this gets corrected and maybe all other systems are checked because water is a very precious resource in the Truckee Meadows.
Shouldn't agree more.
Commissioners, any further questions at this time? Thank you, Mr. Crater. At that point, I'm just going to ask, is there any public comment for this item at this time?
I have no public comment in chambers.
And I have no hands raised via Zoom.
Thank you, ladies. At that point, I will bring it back to, no more questions, close the public hearing, bring it back for either a discussion or a motion.
Madam Chairman, if I can steal your attention for just a moment?
Of course.
If it is the pleasure of the Planning Commission to recommend or to move forward with an approval, can I recommend that instead of the attached conditions of approval in the motion that the maker simply say the existing conditions of approval? Because that would include all of the conditions of approval as they exist, plus all the amendments that have been done over the years. And frankly, the rest of them are not attached, so simply the existing conditions of approval would cover that.
The approved conditions of approval, or existing?
Pardon me, the existing condition rather than attached.
Right, in our motion.
Yes, thank you very much.
Just a word change.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion.
Yes, Commissioner Chesney.
Okay, I move that the Washoe County Planning Commission approve the two-year extension of the time request until October 16, 2023 for tentative subdivision map case number TM5-2-92 for the St. James Village subdivision, subject to the existing conditions of approval as previously amended, having made the findings, findings that the conditions of approval ensure consideration of the items enumerated in NRS 278.360, that the original findings remain valid, and that the circumstances have not appreciably changed since the original approval.
Is there a second on that motion?
Is this Commissioner Savilecik out second?
Thank you, Commissioner Savilecik. We have a first and a second, any further discussion? If not, ladies and gentlemen, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Thank you very much. Motion passes. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we move on to the next item on our agenda, item 9A. Roger, if you could read that for us, please.
Certainly. Thank you, Madam Chairman. Development Code Amendment Case Number WDCA21-0001, and this is Development Code Section 110.406. For hearing discussion and possible action to initiate an amendment to the Washington Development Code at Chapter 110 Development Code, Article 406, which is building placement standards, by adding a new section which allows the Director of Planning and Building Division to approve a modification of standards, Director's Modification, to reduce the front yard setback as otherwise required by the underlying regulatory zone by up to 10 feet from the property line when the edge of pavement or curb on the, of the adjacent right-of-way, R O W, of a local residential street is more than 20 feet from the property line. The Director's Modification must include a finding that the adjacent right-of-way is not planned for a future road expansion and must consider roadway safety and snow storage. Additionally, the county engineer may request that Washoe County be released from any liability related to street maintenance operations. If the proposed amendment is initiated, hold a public hearing and further possible action to deny or recommend approval of the proposed amendments, and if approval is recommended, to authorize the Chair to sign a resolution to that effect.
Thank you, Roger. And presenting is Ms. Julie Olender. Julie, welcome. Thank you.
Good evening, thank you. So as Roger explained, this is a code amendment that you have before you that is, we're requesting both an initiation and to amend the Washoe County Code. So throughout the county, there's several parcels that have large swaths of right-of-way in front of them. And the purpose of this amendment is to help facilitate the, dealing with that large swath. We have people coming in thinking they can ask for variance and various other things, and we really don't have a mechanism to do that. So this gives us and the property owners a little bit of flexibility and another option of how to deal with these, these locations. There are, they are not numerous, but there are some. Here's the section code, I'm not going to read it again since Roger just wrote, read it so well, but it is in your staff report. And just to highlight some of the key things, this will be done with a permit. So if you had this large swath of right-of-way in front of your property and you, and you wanted to use this section of code, you do have to go through a permitting process. However, it's administrative, it goes before the Director of Planning and Building, but it's a, considered a Director's Modification. And again, you can only use up to 10 feet. So let's say you had a 30-foot front setback, you would still have to preserve at least 10 feet of that setback. And then again, you can, you have to have 20, at least 20 feet between your property line and that curb or pavement. So there's, there's only a few places that have that, and I'll show you a few examples of that on the next slide. And again, it's only for local streets, so you're not going to see this on your major arterials, your highways or anything like that. So these are your local collector roadways that are going through the neighborhoods. And then there is a finding that it's not going to be planned for any kind of expansion or any kind of issue, no, any, there are any, any other issues that might come up with it. So with that Director's Modification application, that gets routed through other departments, including the engineering department. So they'll be looking at for any kind of roadway improvements, they'll be making sure that it's a local residential street. So there are some checks and balances here that are going to be going on. So it's, you just can't walk in and get that permit over the counter. So here's some location. This is out in Washoe Valley. There's several, both on Ornsby and Lion Lane. They both have 30 feet of that right-of-way. You can see where the property line is by the hatching, and then you can see sort of where the pavement is. So there's almost 30 feet of right-of-way there. So those property owners have that, you know, have some property in front of them, and in these kind of situations, if they had some kind of outbuilding or wanted to do some expansion on their house, they're, they could build that out, you know, and still preserve 20 feet, I'm sorry, 10 feet of, of a setback. So they're still going to have to have a 10-foot setback. And here's one, here's some, here's one along Huffacre, there's some sections along Huffacres. You're finding these in a lot of the older areas that were developed. So the times the roads were put in, they thought possibly, you know, Huffacre might be a four-lane facility instead of a two-lane facility. So there's, there's quite a bit of right-of-way that was preserved for that. And at this point, the county is not planning on probably expanding Huffacre to be a four-lane road. It's probably going to stay a two-lane road at this point. So that right-of-way is there, and we're still keeping the right-of-way, but that property owner is going to get the option to be able to build out a little bit more into that setback area that they currently cannot build in. Because what we, you know, look at setbacks for is to give you that separation from neighbors, from roadways, and so forth. Well, this person, you know, these people along Huffacre, they already have, you know, 30, almost 30 feet of separation between the roadway and their property line. And what this is going to allow them is to allow them to build a little bit farther into their property line than elsewhere in the county where the property line is right on the street or curb. And then here's another one along David James. Again, an older subdivision that was put in at a time where maybe they were thinking this was going to be a wider road, and that's never happened. So we have another situation where these folks, again, have a wide swath of right-of-way in front of their houses. Again, we're going to give them, this code would give them the flexibility to build into their setbacks up to, you know, and still preserve that 10-foot. to build into their setbacks up to, you know, and still preserve that 10-foot setback. But in this situation, they'd still have almost 30 feet of property, not, part of it is right-of-way, but there would be about a 30-foot swath of property between the pavement and that structure or whatever they're going to build on that property. We did hold an open house on the 15th. We had some people attend by Zoom. There was some confusion about this because people thought, oh, my gosh, we're going to lose people. People aren't going to be able to park on the streets if there's some, you know, issues along the streets. However, the right-of-way is not changing. The right-of-way is being preserved. We, you know, we looked at this from several different angles of trying to figure out how we can accommodate these people who have these large swaths of right-of-way in front of their houses. And this seemed like the most convenient and easy way to do it, where we're documenting it through a Director's Modification that it was looked at in a way that we know that the right-of-way is not going to be expanded on. They're not going to put in another lane of traffic. And so, we had to walk some people through this code amendment because it's not the simplest one. Matter of fact, when we first came up with it, I'm, my eyes sort of glazed over a little bit too as trying to figure out what we're, what we were talking about. But again, I just want to, you know, confirm that we're saving at least 10 feet of setback in front of every house. And again, if they wanted, you know, build into that setback, they've got to have at least 20 feet of right-of-way in front of them, like I showed on this, those different streets in the, in the community. Staff, was, I was able to make the four findings that is required, and I provide a possible motion, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. First off, for you further, is there any, any public comment on either side on this?
I have no public comment in chambers.
Apologies. I have no hands raised to be a Zoom.
All right, thank you, ladies. We'll bring it back to the commission. Are there any questions at this point?
Pat Phillips? I have a question about Huffaker. Which, if you go up to Del Monte, that has been, or from Huffaker between Virginia Street and Del Monte has been widened. That suddenly becomes very narrow there, and there have been a number of people that have built there in just the last year. Are they going to be grandfathered in, or? I'm worried about the future of this because I really see that road being widened. Would they have to seek some special variance, or what is going to happen?
Julie Olander for the record. Thank you for the question. Again, this is going to be reviewed by your engineering department, and if they are anticipating any widening of Huffaker, then they would have the opportunity to deny the request. So, this is going to, you know, be looked at and made sure that there's not any proposed roadway either by the county or by RTC. And again, it's on local residential streets, so most of those streets are not covered by RTC, are not under RTC's preview.
Commissioners, any other questions at this point? If not, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back for either another call, discussion, or for motion?
Madam Chair? I would like to propose a motion.
Yes, Commissioner Chesney.
I move that after giving reason, consideration to the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission initiate and recommend approval of W D C A 21-0001, an amendment to Article 406 Building Placement Standards within Washoe County Chapter 110 Development Code, and to update sections within Article 406. I further move to authorize the chair to sign the resolution contained in the, as Attachment A on behalf of the Washoe County Planning Commission, and to direct staff to present a report to this commission's, of this commission's recommendation to the Washoe County Board of Commissioners within 60 days of today's date. This initiation and recommendation for approval is based on all of the following findings in accordance, in accordance with Washoe County Code Section 110, 818.5 per NE. Inconsistency with master plan promotes the proposed Development Code response to changed conditions and no adverse effects.
Thank you, Commissioner Chesney. Do we have a second in this motion?
Nelson will second.
Thank you, Commissioner Nelson. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing, no further doubt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And to be opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. We move right along. Item 10, it's Chair and Commission Items. Ladies and gentlemen, do we have any future agenda items that we'd like to make sure is on the agenda? Hearing now at this time, are there any future requests for information from staff?
Chair Doncheck.
Yes, Commissioner Chivalec.
Yes, at the last meeting, I requested that the Planning Commissioners be sent information on how to interact with the master plan updates and such, and I did not receive that communication. So, if I'm making that request again.
Okay, and I'm going to add something. Last meeting, you put it in the request that we always get, a planned, not built?
A planned, but not yet built.
Not yet built. And I know, don't know if that was for the county, but I'd also like to make that sure that not only in the county, but we had this, both City Sparks and Reno in that, so we can get a better picture. So, I'd like to add on to that because I don't remember. It was just for the county for that.
That would be, that information is available on the regional planning website.
Yeah. But I mean, if they could put it in when they give us a packet, make it part of the packet like we had in the past, it would make all of it easier for us to, to prepare for the meetings and know what's going on, I feel. Okay, anything else from anybody, requests for staff? Okay, then we move on to item 11, Directors and Legal Counsel's item. Roger, do you have any reports on previous Planning Commission items?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Madam Chair. I have been asked by the planning manager to let you know that on September 14th, the Board of County Commissioners approved a resolution to initiate an amendment to the Regional Plan Utility Corridor Map to support the placement of a transmission line for the Rock Springs Solar Project, which had previously come before this commission.
Great.
Is that all, Roger?
That is all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roger.
Jen, any legal information updates for us, ma'am?
Yes, I do have a couple of things today. So, months ago, the Pyramid Lake Paiute Tribe filed a Supreme Court writ contesting the Board of County Commissioners' approval of ORMAT expansion of that geothermal field, which I'm sure you all probably remember. Ultimately, the main issue between the parties had to do with the content of the environmental monitoring plan, which is a requirement by the federal government for there to be an environmental monitoring plan. And so, really, that was the issue between ORMAT and the Pyramid Lake Paiute Tribe as the content of that plan. So, they were able to work that out eventually and resolve the language for that continuing monitoring plan. And so, the tribe did voluntarily dismiss that Supreme Court writ. So, that is the final action of that litigation. And the other thing that I'm currently dealing with, there was a petition for judicial review filed in the Second Judicial District Court on the abandonment of part of Pyramid, or Paiute Drive, I believe, is the, is the streets of Incline Village. And so, that's currently being, working through the system, and that's currently being briefed. So, I will have a future update once that is resolved and let you know how that turned out.
Thank you very much.
That's it for me.
Okay. One more last time. Any, ladies, any public comment?
I have no public comment in chambers.
And I have no hands raised via Zoom.
Thank you very much. Then, ladies and gentlemen, motion for adjournment?
So moved.
We're adjourned, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much.